All right, thank you everyone for coming to our meeting this evening. I would ask if there are any agenda additions or deletions? Anybody have any?
Mr. Chairman, under the highway, I'd like to add to open the paving bids. That thing added to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Is there any yays or nays out there? Any conversation before I call the call? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, any other additions or deletions? If that's the case, I would ask for approval of the regular, excuse me, June 28 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any changes, any corrections?
Nothing I saw.
All right, good job Katie on those, by the way.
Thank you to Heidi who took the notice for me up last week.
Okay, Heidi. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against that? You're none, so passed. Highway, road commissioner's report.
The, just a report, we've been trying to get ready for paving on Walker Mountain Road. Cleaning ditches, replacing roadway culverts and whatnot. Stone mining some of the ditches. And hopefully we can accept a bid tonight for paving.
All right.
Mowing's been ongoing, on roadside mowing.
I sent me the thing.
To the east side of town, it's almost done. And some of the west side town got started and will be over there this coming week.
I did have a couple folks that were concerned about mowing on this side. Yeah, by Cortlandt Road and a couple places there. And I tried to explain to them that we had some priorities. However, as you just mentioned, you're gonna get that, all right, so.
We've been pretty busy with trying to get some of the projects finished up and especially for the paving.
Well, that was my explanation to two people that, given the fact that we have to have all the ditching done and stuff, especially on Cortlandt Road because we are gonna do some paving. We want that all done.
And, no?
Um, and Walker Mountain Road, yes, excuse me.
Also, we took delivery of the new excavator last week. And had a radio installed in it today.
Did you guys test it out yet?
We used it some in the sand pile, just to move some sand and stuff and reshape.
How do you like it?
Clean up the yard and it seemed to work pretty good, basically to get kinda used to it.
I went down and checked that out, really nice piece of equipment, so.
Be a nice looking machine.
Yeah.
See how it works.
Do we need a motion to post the old excavator tonight?
Uh, we can talk about that. Well, we can do it now, on the highway.
I mean, we're gonna list it on Craigslist like.
Correct, like we did.
We've done with the trucks, right?
The 515 like that.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize the road commissioner to list the used excavator on Craigslist and seek to get the best dollars we can for it.
Should we specify that?
About timeframe?
Yeah, I would.
Can we do it so we can actually open business next meeting, two weeks? Does that push it? A lot of times on Craigslist, it's pretty active right off the bat.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I would think next meeting, we could potentially have something done in two weeks.
If we have at least two bids.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to, yeah. But I mean, listed on Craigslist and like, I mean, it seems like, I know we had one of the trucks for a while, but it seems like the other one sold pretty quickly when we got it posted and got it listed.
Afterward, yeah.
So, um, so yeah, I'll just stand by my motion that the road commissioner be authorized to post it with the hopes of maybe we can finalize something next meeting.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Bob beat you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Gorge Road.
Gorge Road. Parking.
Hey, I'm, this is, I am not up to date on this parking.
We have, uh, would you like to stand up, state your name, please?
I'm Carol Tashi, and I actually live in Wolliford, not Clarendon, so, carpetbagger. And I had a conversation with Michael last week. So for forever, it seems like Dennis and I, after our chores, after farming, and after work, whatever, we head down Gorge Road, parked on one of those little cutouts, you know, walked through the woods, cooled off in the river, you know, you all know, that's like the treasure of our, of this town. And I got a parking ticket. And I was amazed at getting a parking ticket after so many years of doing that. And so, I'm not fighting the ticket, I paid the ticket. I called the sheriff's department and they said, you know, it was a decision that the board had made. So I called Michael, Michael was a share member, so I knew Michael, that's why I called Michael. And we talked about, I understand why. I understand that there were drugs and partiers and kids making ruckuses and all those kinds of things. But my understanding was that was happening probably exclusively in the evenings, you know, once it was dark. And so, I would love for the board to consider or reconsider allowing, and I would consider that off-street because, you know, I think some of that's probably, you know, cutoffs that the town has done, but I think some of it was also when the culverts were put in and when the road was closed. You know, and you're parking really off the road, it's not, it's, I don't think it's a danger at all, you know, you're not sticking out or anything. So I'd love to have the board consider maybe the parking ban being at night to allow people like us who are just, you know, regular folks who wanna take a dip in the river during our short summer season, that maybe there could be a parking ban at night to prevent the kids from partying and whatever other kinds of things cause problems so that other people could swim. And I know that the parking area down, you know, it's ironic because the parking area down at the, you know, at the, at the end of the road, that's probably more dangerous, you know, all the cars are spilt, because that gets really busy, that, the cars spill out. We tend to not swim down there because that's where there's kids and there's families and it's just, you know, it's not a place where you can just walk in, jump in the water and jump out. Michael reminded me that for a long time, people were not wearing bathing suits and that was got some problems.
You do remember that, Bob.
We're a couple of old timers and so I don't think that's a problem for us. And, yeah, so I just don't know what it takes to reconsider that. Is that a, you know, a board decision, is that something that I can talk more about? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
But honestly, the reason we did that was because of the daytime parking.
Really?
Oh yeah, it was from one end of the road to the other.
It was really bad for a long time.
Have you been down recently because?
And I have alerted, I have alerted the sheriff's department on several occasions that there is still something going on down there, daylight.
Maybe that was my red car.
No, I wasn't, I looked at that recent, but, yeah. Definitely this past summer, I've already called him a couple different times.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that all now Vermont National Forest or whatever? Isn't it all the way up through now?
It's all in conservancy, yes.
So, truthfully, probably the proper course of action is to petition the state for another parking area if they wanna put one in up there, right?
Well, initially, when the River Conservancy Group got that, that's when they took the bridge down. And then, um, the state, there was a parking area there, because Dave used to call us all the time. But then the state came in and they looked at, you know where the cars are parked now? Then there's a little plateau up there. That's where they were going to expand the parking area up in there and make that another resource. There was some talk about up where the, where they built, looks like Fort Ticona Road up there. That straightaway, sexy.
Oh, you're talking about where the airport built their runway?
There was, initially, some pull-offs there, but the road was widened and cars used to park in there too, before we did that, and that was years ago.
Oh, yeah, a long time ago.
Well, I remember when I first came on the board, it was a big issue. And we had a lot of conversation and there was a lot of tickets at that point because we were having, and I know back then, I was driving it almost every day and I remember commenting of what it looked like and how much trouble we were having because somebody was gonna get hit or somebody, there was gonna be problems back then.
The biggest problem was just on this end, just with that real sharp turn is, cars, there was like a little road that used to go down there and then cars started parking in there and then when they couldn't park in there, they just left it on the road. So that was already narrow. And then with the cars there, so that, that part of, we really wanted to close that down real quick. And then it was suggested because before the state approved their runway area and stuff like this, the road wasn't as wide as it is now. So cars was on that straightaway, there was a lot of cars there, then the guy had a shooting range over there, remember that? And so finally, we said, you know, we're gonna have to do something. When the River Conservancy Group came in after the bridge was taken down, and I don't know if that land that you're talking about runs all the way up to the.
You have to look on the tax map.
Yeah.
The tax map would show you.
I believe it's the whole corridor.
I thought it was too, I thought that they ended up with the whole corridor.
From Route 7 to cover bridge.
Well.
Could be wrong, but I thought, I thought like you.
There's a guy who's an author, who used to have his shooting range over there. And he owned part on the.
Airport side of the road.
South side, no, no.
Oh, on the north side?
On the south side. He owned, just before the bridge, he owned some land in there. No, it wasn't before the bridge, it was a little bit, the guy lives, I can't remember what the heck the road name is over there.
Not Susan Lane, what is it?
Brendelane?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And he owned all the way down to there and he used to shoot his weapons down there all the time. And neighbors used to come and complain and all this kind of stuff. But anyway, long story short, it's not, there was only 11 acres that was by the River Conservancy Group. And that was just as you went across the bridge, the old bridge that used to be part of Route 7. There's four or five acres there. And then, on both sides, you know, there's a house over there, right? Just past that house, that's where the Conservancy Group had some land. So I don't believe it's the whole length, I think it's only on more on this end, but we can check that out.
So I, I mean, I for one feel like we just got a handle over there. I don't know if I'm ready to loosen up on the parking restrictions as, as one person on the board, I gotta be honest. I feel like we, we really, in the last year and a half, really have just gotten it under control, in my opinion. So, that's where I'm at. I don't know if I'm, I'm ready to loosen up yet, just because it was such a problem before.
Well, the reason I notified the sheriff's department a couple different times was because there are now pull-offs.
Yeah.
And they've redeveloped some pull-offs there. And I've seen as many as a dozen cars there, coming down there.
I think.
Is there a time of day where you're seeing?
Uh, anytime during the day.
We're usually going like afterward, you know, after a long day of work and you're hot and sweaty and you're like, oh, because there's hard, and again, you know, I mean, when you go down versus when I go down, I mean, there's hardly any cars and I don't know if that's the issue or not. I just wondered if there's a way in which, you know, it's such a wonderful place, right? It's such a beautiful place and, you know, Michael was saying, yeah, you know, so get a whole bunch of people together and somebody drops you off and that's great if you're going for the day. But if you just, you know, when you've had a long day and you've worked and you're sweaty and you're hot and you're like, oh, I can just, five minutes, I can just go and take a dip and come out. And I didn't know if there's a way in which that could be supported. And I don't wanna open up a whole Pandora's Box, obviously. I'm just thinking, I mean, we've been swimming there for, I feel like forever. And I was just very surprised to get a ticket. I mean, that park, no parking sign looks like it's been there since, you know, 1963. I guess the kids were shooting at it or somebody was shooting at it.
There was actually, if you, I think there's five signs that say no parking along the roadside, up and back. If you, there's four, five.
We've, we've replaced them at least twice since I've been on the board because they've been destroyed.
You know, we go up there and we do green up day up there and stuff like that and, you know, I mean, because there's trash. I mean, it's kinda gross.
That was one of the other reasons too, because there's so much trash.
Yeah, but I feel like.
That's when Pat Leahy came down to help us clean that out when he was running for office at one point.
Really, but like, I think of the reason why we go down there and do green up day. I mean, you know, we live on Creek Road and so we do green up day on Creek Road. But, you know, we've met other people up there and they all say, oh yeah, you know, I swim up here, I swim up here. It's just such a beautiful place and it just seems like by making no parking in those cutouts, and again, I appreciate, you don't want dozens and dozens of cars. But making it, you're kind of, making no parking eliminates the opportunity for just regular folk to go down there and go for a quick dip and cool off and, you know, our summer's so short and so any opportunity.
But I would like to suggest that maybe, two things. One, first of all, if we can look who owns the properties on both sides. The state, obviously, where the water is, they own that, no argument there. But especially on that straightaway area on the west or eastern side, I.
That's all in the conservancy, because I went through that last year with the, all the trash that was dumped there.
Yeah.
They wanted us as a town crew to go all the way out to the river and pick it up, out by right of way.
That's right, I remember that now.
And I checked into it and I went to the forestry and nobody would ever do anything.
Well, if it's any consolation, we did. It's pretty clean up there and, I mean, you know, it's cleaner, I can't say it's perfectly clean.
But I wonder at some point, let's do a little bit more research on that. I'm not fooling and saying, yeah, let's try and get a parking area up there because I was part of the board when we did have some really serious trouble, especially with the drugs. And I'm not inclined so much to say, yeah, let's go, go for it and stuff. I would like to do a little bit more research, land-wise, who owns it and stuff. And then, if at some point, the town decides, well, maybe there's a couple locations with, if we've worked with the state where we can put some parking areas in. Maybe put some signs up that say no parking after 5:00 PM in these, during these months and, you know. I don't wanna just totally stop this conversation.
Right, I appreciate that.
But in the same token, where I think I stand on it right now is to say that we've had some issues. And if we can figure out a way to change those issues, then maybe we can sit down as a town community and come up with a thing. But as of right now, for me, I think, you know, what we have there, and legally, because a couple of those signs are destroyed again, I wonder legally, if you're parking there and they give you a ticket, even though it says, the policy says no parking, but you can't see the signs because they're destroyed, maybe there's a legal issue there.
I mean, I didn't fight the ticket, obviously. I mean, it was $15 and so, you know, I mean, but I can't afford to spend $15 every time to go for a dip. Can you, does anybody have any suggestions on just what we might do or what, you know, just again, regular people who just wanna go up there? Is there a time of the day, Rick, that you would say, oh, so Carol and Dennis go up at 3:00 because?
Well, if it's hot, it's all day long.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. If it's raining, obviously, there's not that many. But my own cousins got tickets up there at the head of the falls. They were panning for gold and they actually found some, but they didn't get enough to pay the ticket.
Yeah, no, $15 is a lot of money if you're just going in for a dip.
So even they got one and they parked right by this darn sign.
And there's, so there's not a time of the day that you would say?
Not really.
Sheriff's patrolling certain times because that's when you're most worried about it?
Yeah. But the gorge has a dusk to dawn curfew, which has, has not been adhered to either. They, they people go in there anyway.
The only other suggestion that I would have is maybe like if you're, if you said you know the people up there is if you could, they would let you park at their house.
I, I don't know them, I was thinking of locking on some doors, but.
Just in seeing if.
Yeah, you're nodding your head, yeah.
Seeing if they would let you park in their driveway, you know, and that way you're not in the no parking zone.
Because there's like, it looks like there's, like, there's big trucks or, you know, aren't there like some?
It's up by Hans.
Up by Hanson's.
John Hanson's.
Yeah, is that a good person to ask?
I mean, anybody along there.
I mean, I just don't know them and so, you know.
Best thing goes, well, get hold of me and tie up with the son, Mark, which was on the end of the road.
Really, okay.
Maybe.
Can I call you? And, okay, so Mark Hanson?
Mark, his name is Mark Hans.
Hans, okay. So maybe Dennis, I could give you a call? Okay. And I'm more than happy, I mean, we're more than happy to do what, you, you know, if you need some help in terms of figuring it out, you know. I'm more than happy to go up there every day and check to see how many people are out there. Again, it's such a short season, so.
Okay, all right, well.
Well, thank you for giving.
Good start to a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
On, to rest my report, I'd like to push along the paving bids.
I think that's next anyway.
Yeah.
You got them to open up?
Heidi, is that what you meant by open? Katie, not Heidi, Jesus.
That's separate. That's paving contract.
I'll look at this.
Yes, that up to break. All these folks are aware of the length that we wanna?
Yes. In my, I don't, the section of road is probably one of the worst sections we're gonna be ever doing a whole, with all the belling and stuff and the corners being built up to eliminate the crowns that are in the corners and stuff, so it's, it's not hard hard, but it's gonna be, the estimates of tonnage is somewhat difficult to actually figure out until you start really laying it out, build up the corners and stuff and it might take a little bit more material than calculated or even less.
So the thing to look at is really the.
Reunite.
Yep.
We were awarded $184,000 for this paving project.
That's what this is?
Yeah.
Or was?
Yeah, that's just the grant agreement with the state that doesn't have to.
Yeah, your two low bids are these right over here, that's the high one.
Yep.
I believe. I think you're gonna find that's the high bid. That's the grant. This is the grant, yep, so I guess we better announce some prices here, given when Cash passes it back.
I didn't see the third one.
Wilk.
Yeah.
Trying to see the per ton.
Did you see this one?
I haven't seen this, the only one I've seen is the one that passes, yeah.
I send a little.
That one back, I was just gonna.
There a third one there that nobody's looking at?
Uh, this one right here?
Yep. Let's, yeah, please.
Are you ready, do you wanna announce to the public what they are so we get the word out here?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm reading.
Okay, so I think I've got everybody's written down here, so, um, and just going by, um, the square yard and the tonnage prices, just to start, that's, we, we obviously, we can rattle off the final numbers, but that's a starting point to see where the different companies came in. So for reclaim and the grinding of the roads, Pike's reclaim per square yard price is $1.50. Wilks came in at $1.15 and Fuller's is $1.25. And then, of course, where the bulk of our money goes is the tonnage of asphalt. So the asphalt price per ton for the different companies, Pike is in at 72.15. Wilk is in at 66.55 and Fuller is in at 65.90. So those are the breakdown of the various pricings for the rates.
Cash, you have a recommendation after hearing this, because you know the folks that are doing this.
Did you see that one, Cash?
65 cents, I'm just trying to, being Fuller being the least expensive per ton, but up a little bit, 10 cents for the grinding, more per square yard, but the grinding's only, I didn't actually, right down the grinding yardage. Therefore, my opinion is to go with the Fuller, the $65.90, which is the least expensive, it's a touch more, it's 10 cents more for, per square yard grinding. But the grinding is a lowest, a low input of the whole project. If you understand.
Where the bulk, the bulk of the.
The bulk of it.
Cost is in the asphalt.
And that's what, I just figured it out, six, erased it.
65.90 a ton?
65.90 for Fuller.
66.55 minus the, 65.90, there's 65 cents difference. We're gonna pay, yeah.
65 cents less per ton.
Per ton on Fuller's, but he's 15, he's 10 cents more on the grinding, which the total bill will still be cheaper even though we paid the extra 10 cents for the grinding because that is the lowest input of the, of the whole project. So my recommendation to go Fuller at $65.90, $1.25 per square yard for grinding.
So moved?
Is there a second for discussion? All right, is there any further discussion on this? And once again, it's a grant out there for, how much was that?
184,000.
Yeah, 184,000.
So that's.
Looks like Mike, I was actually, I was gonna, when we finish this, I'll make a motion on this.
All right. All right, so there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had some discussion. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're gonna notify all three folks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll further make the motion that you, on behalf of the board, sign off on our paving.
Grant.
Grant for the Class 2 roadway program. The grant in total of $184,000 on behalf of the town.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Cash, do you have anything else under highway?
That's all I have.
As soon as we have some public here, anybody from the public have any questions? Yes?
I was just curious what part of Walker Mountain you're gonna pay?
We're paving at four way, a creek road, all the way up Walker.
all the way up Walker Mountain to East Tenth Road. As well, one shot deal instead of three different breaks, like it hasn't been in the past.
That's needed, so that's good.
And up on the, above, say Lumis's cub cadet dealer, above there, that sharp corner.
Yeah.
We're actually gonna lift up that side, so it don't roll to the wrong side.
Thank you.
Technically, we're to Gail and Andrea.
Short and sweet. Short and sweet.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Nothing else then?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, warrants are voting and drifting, they're over here, uh, guests. Gail Akazi and Andrea McCormick. Have at it.
I just want to mention, since we didn't get any notice of it through the planning or the zoning, our last meeting was on the twenty-fifth of May, and apparently, um, Crush Rock, uh, through, um, Casellas is going for an Act Two Fifty, a minor application, to change pretty much everything. They had a, um, site visit that no one in town knew about. They had a pre-hearing conference, the West Rutland, it was virtual, except you could meet at the West Rutland Town Clerk's Office to attend, but no one in the town had notification of that. So to my knowledge, no one in the town, either planning, zoning, or SLUG Board really has given any feedback to this project. Now, all five of you are on this side of town, and unfortunately or fortunately, you're not over there with Crush Rock, and we've been, um, Crush Rock has been pretty much, I've been there since eighty-seven. I think Crush Rock went in nineteen eighty-six, and they pretty much stayed with the same parameters, the same hours operation with the crusher, every five or, five or six hours, five days a week, from nine to three, and they operate Monday through Friday with the crushing, and they can, they can haul on Saturday mornings at nine to twelve. But they want to change all of that, they want, they're limited with their trucks right now through their Act Two Fifty and our condition use permit in the town. And to be really honest, I haven't looked at any of this in ten years, because, um, the last thing that came across was the, um, asphalt plant application. That was more than ten years ago. A long time ago. So I'm, I'm pretty concerned with truck traffic and days of the week operation. We're used to the noises and stuff, I'm, I'm up a mile from that, I don't know if you know where I live, I'm almost to the old hotel. And when I stand in my backyard, it's like an amphitheater effect, it's like it's right next to me. One good thing in this application, the minor application they're doing, is that they want to do some noise mitigation on the crusher. And I'm all in favor of that part of their minor application. I just don't want to see the hours of operation expand for the crusher.
Is that what they're asking for mostly?
Yeah, I have, it's a really simple.
The blasting, the operations, or the comparison?
This is a really simple project overview, and in it, they have current and what they want. So I just made, it's only four pages, like I said, I haven't visited this in a long time. There's three pages there, double sided, and, um, the last page is how I found all the information, I went to the A and R website, A and R dot, I think it's N. A and R dot Vermont dot V. And the last page shows you that there's a whole lot more information online, actually, they can't have the Act Two Fifty in Rutland because John Casella is on the commission for District One. So, um, a Susan Baird in District Five is gonna handle it, and I spoke with her, and she was very helpful, and I spoke with her after the pre-hearing conference, because, like I said, I didn't know anything about it. Andy had called me a day or so before that, and Walt Fabian had mentioned it to her. And the day of the pre-hearing conference, Annette Smith, Vermonters for a Clean Environment, called and said, "How come you're not at this pre-hearing conference?" What pre-hearing conference?
Right.
I didn't know anything about it, but it put everything together that Andy had mentioned the night before. And I basically just coming here today to tell you, there's a lot of neighbors in the neighborhood, and we decided that it was better just for a couple of us to come down, tell you about it. And the other thing is there's not even a notice, it might be there now, because I mentioned it to Gloria. All Act Two Fifty permits, and this was, the application went in in March, and we've had meetings zoning and planning, and there's nothing in the mail, I'm the clerk of the zoning and the, and the planning commission, and we've received nothing.
I was gonna say, you, so you guys hadn't even gotten it?
Nothing.
Okay.
Zero.
And this pre-hearing?
Pardon?
Before I go here, the pre-hearing was held in Westside?
Yeah. Yeah.
They're not?
I mean, they're impacted, sure, because a lot of, most of the traffic goes
But not the operations.
North. No, the whole thing is in Clarendon, it's really kind of a slap in the face.
Yeah, they get the traffic, but most of it.
Right.
So you can see in there that they want to change, they really don't want, they don't want to have to have an open house, which I I don't think I've ever attended their open house. They don't want to have to do a five-year reporting, they want it to be like, what, twenty-five, thirty-five years, something like that.
Well, today they blasted, they're supposed to set off a, an alarm whistle, never, never happens.
We don't get any of that.
They blast, you know.
Yeah, and you get the noise, and then, and like I said, I'm a mile up, I don't get any new windows.
Ladies gentlemen at the back there.
But our windows just rattle, you can feel it come right through, and that's over a mile away.
Gail, as a gentleman.
I just wanted to introduce myself, I apologize for not doing it ahead of time, but I'm John Casella here on behalf of Casella Construction, I saw that you guys were on the agenda, so I just wanted to join to answer any questions that, that any of you have, so.
Well, thank you.
Well, how come this was held down in West Rutland? And no notification to the town?
It was held virtually, because it was, when it was scheduled, it was prior to all the COVID restrictions being lifted, so it was a virtual meeting that was noticed, and they used the West Rutland Town Hall as a place for Susan Baird to, to sit, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure why it was West Rutland, that wasn't, that wasn't our choice, that was Act Two Fifty's decision, but the hearing itself was a virtual hearing.
I would like to make a comment on that, um, given the fact that it's in, the whole project is in Clarendon. I think going forward, now, we may have enough guests at that meeting where it wouldn't be good here, but we have the, community center by the elementary school. And I think that if you folks get in touch with Katie or, uh, Matt Jacobowski, who chairs that committee, let's make an arrangement down there to, especially now that COVID, you know, if you have shots and all this stuff, but anyway, I would suggest that we have that meeting in the town.
Ab- absolutely.
Because, uh, that may go a little bit further for communications to a lot of people down.
I think there, there wasn't any intent by Act Two Fifty, I don't believe, I think it was, the, the hearing being virtual was the hearing itself. Why they chose to have Susan go to West Rutland, I, I don't, we weren't in control of that, but the the hearing was a virtual hearing, just happens that Susan sat in West Rutland for the virtual conference.
Now, is there a scheduled, uh, uh, update?
Yeah, so all, as far as notice goes, um, notice was sent out to all abutting property, to towns, to planning commissions, every abutting property owner was given multiple notices, and it was also noticed in the newspaper. And we went and sent letters as well, before we even started the permitting process, to all of our abutting neighbors. Abutting, so being a mile or wherever you are, I'm not sure exactly where you are.
Well, no, I'm not in the butter, I'm not in the butter.
We didn't, we didn't send mailers to everybody in town, obviously, but we sent information to every town, planning commission, regional planning commission.
We didn't get anything.
The planning, the planning commission, it was sent to Carol Geary, who has not been on any board here for about three years, and she hasn't been clerk of the planning commission for close to ten years. And she never received anything, because I was in touch with her, so the planning and zoning, um, boards, planning and select board are statutory parties to any Act Two Fifty that happens in our town.
Right.
But we received no notice, and usually, there's, um, some, I'm not sure who's responsible for this, whether it's the applicant or Act Two Fifty, there'd be a notice on our board in there. And I checked the mail, even though we haven't met that much during the pandemic, I come in probably bi-weekly and check the mail and check the board, to see if there's anything that's pertinent to our zoning or planning, it's just convenient that I'm clerk of both.
So, Gail, interestingly enough, just to pass this along, this one has the list of who it was supposedly sent to. And Bronson's on the list, Jeff Byasuzi's on the list, and Gloria.
How is, um, I don't think the emails are correct, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm.
That's the thing, we don't have town emails.
We physically mailed everything.
Actually, you're on the list too.
The planning commission didn't get anything from the mail, and neither did the zoning board.
All, all I can say is anybody that was on the list, which should have included everybody.
I didn't get anything until Gail started getting hold of me.
Was all mailed.
You mean by snail mail or email?
Mail.
Regular mail?
Yeah.
When I get something, I usually notice Katie.
Katie, you haven't gotten anything. Even now, I came down on Friday, two days after the, um, pre-hearing conference.
Until recently, that's when I started.
And I did see that notice.
And Gail started, then I all of a sudden started getting information.
But it was too late. It's okay, we're still statutory. But I just didn't think any of this gentleman knew was going on, hence my appearance tonight. It's nice to meet you.
So, having this discussion, I think that is hopefully, you're going to encourage whoever is setting up the next meeting to meet down in, either here or down in our community center.
Absolutely.
And contact Matt Jacobowski. Bob, you're on that committee.
Yeah, I'm on that committee too, uh, yeah, it's, uh, trying to think, the only night, it's used, once a month, uh, scouts are using it right now. I don't know what else Gloria has got, because Gloria does, uh, scheduling up there, but, uh, no, and to me, that would be the place to do it, knowing, which I believe there'd be a pretty good turnout on this issue.
Yes. So.
And I, I mean, I can see, and just looking through the changes, I can see that as a town, the biggest concern I think we are gonna be fielding on these are gonna be the change in the crusher hours. I mean, to go from seven to, or eight to three is what it has been, and to go to seven to five is gonna be a big change for that side of town.
Yeah, that's in the Act Two Fifty, I don't know where the condition use permit falls in. Yeah, I don't remember that, that comes in, because I haven't, I haven't visited it in quite a while.
Truck traffic, we're not, the, probably the biggest thing to take away from the permit, we're looking for operational changes mostly in all ballot concerns, and we're, um, open door, I've always had an open door to any of our neighbors, we've got, we've, in my opinion, done a good job with our neighbors, because we actually care. And that maybe isn't always the case, but we haven't, since we started operating the quarry in twenty fifteen, we haven't had any complaints, any issues. And it's not because there wasn't a opportu- opportunity for them, it's because we're very diligent about it, and we're not looking to expand truck trips, we're not looking to add additional truck trips, we're not looking to expand the quarry or the annual extraction limits. We're just looking to loosen up some of the operating conditions to be able to be competitive, and one of the things that we've done to, I think, help our relationship with the neighbors is we've taken a very deliberate approach to the impacts that we have on our neighbors, and we've built berms for sound detonating, we're installing rubber liners on the hopper of the jaw, which is one of the loudest areas when the trucks dump into the crusher. So there'll be rubber liners to reduce that sound. We're using electronic, or we're proposing to use electronic blasting methods, which have wave cancelling technology for how the shot is detonated versus the historical. So we're, we're doing, we brought in line power to get rid of the twelve-hundred KW generator, which was environmentally not good, and it also was a lot of sound, so we brought in phase three power into the quarry to take that all-electric and reduce all of the motors and, and generators that were running. So we've done a lot of things to, to prepare for, um, you know, our operations and, and attempt to be as good of a neighbor as we can be, and, you know, I, I think that's a part of why we haven't had a lot of, we haven't had any issues with, with neighbors since we've been operating it.
Well, I'm just here to tell you that nobody ever sounds the alarm before they blast, it never happens.
They do, um, I, I have to.
I'm there in my house eighty-five percent of the time.
You may not hear it, I know they do.
I hear the blast, and I don't hear the alarm before it goes off.
Are you on the, the call list?
I should be, but I didn't get a notice.
And I've got probably six people that we call, and we, we've said this to any of the neighbors, anytime anybody has had any question, we've offered it, and glad to call you before we blast to give you a heads up, and that's what we do with a number of the other neighbors, we do sound an alarm before, there's two warning alarms, but they're air horns. And I know that it's done every time, I, well, I haven't been there for every blast, but I've been there for the majority of blasts, and that's followed very swiftly.
Can you supply him with a phone number?
Sure.
Yeah.
Five five eight, eight one one one.
State your name.
And what was your name, sorry?
Andrea McCormick.
Okay. Yeah, uh, gladly.
Sometimes the closer you are to the quarry, you don't hear as much as a mile away.
I hear, I hear the crusher twenty-four seven.
And you're on, almost like a face side, up in the air.
I hear, I can hear their voices sometimes, that's how far I am.
Give you an example on the certificate of service. Andy's dad, who passed several years ago, the trust is on the list. And the trust mail went to a granddaughter in Neverton, Andy, who lives right there. So, a lot of people just don't pay attention to stuff like that, and in the near future, Andy's name will be in place of the trust. So that's another issue, will she be a part of that?
We're happy to.
I realize that, I realize that, I'm just telling you.
If the trust is in her address.
Right.
You know, that's unfortunately, probably why she received it.
Right.
But we're happy to, happy to sit down with anyone and change any of that.
All right, is there?
Basically, I just wanted to come here and let you guys know what was going on, and hopefully you can assign or pick someone to attend the, um, merits hearing, which has not been scheduled yet.
It hasn't, but it's in the process for the end of the month, is some of the emails that are going around now, trying to schedule the hearing, so.
Gail, given the fact that you're on a planning commission, would you be available to, if the select board decides a?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm sure, I mean.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I have too much information in my head for the whole thing. Basically, my thing is, like I said, truck traffic and, um, hours of operation. And in the past, it was decided that anything outside of those hours, we're all used to those hours. You know, we've been living with it for how many years now?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, but any, I've normally, they're thirty-four. But anything outside of that is gonna be disruptive to us, and, and Andy has a B and B, and there's other business owners in the area that, you know.
He had the camping area.
He's got a campground, you know, there's just a lot of little things that are gonna be affected by this, so we'd like to have someone there that can speak to our concerns, that, that's basically why we came tonight.
Because.
I think the, the reality is, I'm, I'm assuming now, hopefully, the planning commission will, since we've brought attention to it tonight, I hope that they will get noticed. But I, yes, I agree, Gail is a great representative, but I think, based on the thought process and based on getting town taxpayer input, I think there really should be one of us there too.
Yeah, well.
Well, anyone's, anyone can go. You could go, anyone can go without, I mean, we're not going to have time to get the planning commission together to send a representative. We're just not going to be able to do it. So that's why, if you say, if John is saying that they're going to schedule it, try and by the end of the month, then someone needs to be there, because we really do have concerns.
Is that usually a daytime meeting? You have to know where it's at.
Well, I think we just need to.
The Clairenden Community Center.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Troy, kid, listen.
I was told that you were a smart man.
Good choice.
You tell us where, that's where it'll be.
I think we gotta.
I think we should all be there.
We gotta see when it's going to be.
All right, then we'll see who's available from the board, and I, because you're on a planning commission, and you have history.
I would like to do a little bit of research on our conditional use permit and where that falls into the Act 250 and how it compares to what they're asking for. If I'm not mistaken, I think you have to come back to the town to redo the conditional use permit, but I could be wrong. I don't know, it's been so long since I.
I was going to say, so, because it would have been initially permitted under a conditional use permit.
Yeah, it's an industrial use in a commercial residential area, and that hasn't changed. And we had our zoning, I redid our zoning, helped with Carol Geary and the rest of the zoning back in 11, 2011, and it hasn't been changed since then. And conditional use permit, to my knowledge, has not been changed.
This is why I think it's important for somebody such as yourself, who has a history in the planning commission and works as a planning commission, if the date comes and you pass that on to us, I mean, we'll see who's not busy and.
Who's available.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think everybody should be there, to tell you the truth. It doesn't hurt.
All right.
Thank you for.
So how do we stand now?
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, because I mean, that's, that's a big thing that I.
So when is your next meeting? I mean, are you going to assign someone to be there?
Yeah, so if we have the date by our next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
We can determine.
It's the 12th, okay.
Determine who, or if, everybody can go.
Yeah, is it going to be before then, you think, the next two weeks?
I doubt it, but this just, the emails just started going today on what dates were available.
She assigned someone today.
For the end of July was what they were.
Is Katie's email on that notice list?
I thought it was.
I think it's a good idea if you assign someone today, only because if they.
You're on it.
If they put it together.
But you, it's your wrong, your wrong emails on there.
That's the same thing that happened with Carol. Carol doesn't have an email here.
That's my other email.
You have one?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, that, so you should be on it if you get email at that email.
Best town clerk.
Gloria will get it. Bronson's email's on here, and it's the right one.
I don't see Katie's on there.
No.
Well, Katie, I'm gonna, if I get anything, then I'll just forward to you and the rest of the select board.
If, as long as my schedule allows, I'll plan to attend.
Yeah.
I can tell you that. It's being summer, I've got more availability, so.
And I think the board acknowledges that you, with your background on the planning commission and stuff, should be a member going. Now, we can email Bronson and say, this is our suggestion to have you do this. And if he thinks it's necessary, he'll appoint then that representing the planning commission.
Well, the planning commission is already a statutory party to this. But it was not, was not notified properly.
But the same.
At all, it still hasn't been notified.
The same token, I don't want to speak for the chairman of the planning commission.
Right.
All right, so we dance that dance with the schools, actually.
Okay.
And, you know, so I'll see what I can do, I'll talk with.
Well, if, if the select board ever decided to name anyone as a representative for them, it wouldn't have to be that they were on the planning or zoning. It could be anyone that you.
Correct.
You do. I, hopefully you'll get notice.
I hope so. All right.
Oh, and the other, one other thing.
Yes.
I want to know, I don't know who's responsible for putting an Act 250 notice of application on our board. There's one in there now for a storage unit operation that was the middle of June, but your application was in March, and there's still nothing on the board in there that lets anyone in town know that you have a minor application going. And I'm not saying that it's your fault by any means.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I don't know the answer to that.
I know.
My assumption is by sending it to the town, it would be posted, but I'm, I'm speaking out of school. I don't know if that was our responsibility to come post it.
I don't either.
And if that's the case, then I'll own that. I don't think me or anybody on my team came and posted it.
Far, as far as I know, on the town end, as soon as Gloria receives it or it goes through you, it gets posted.
Right.
As soon as we receive it, it gets stamped and posted. So that's the, like, without having received it, obviously, it's not stamped and it's not posted.
So I mentioned it to her.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, at the same time, the town website is being redone, I guess. And so Gloria said she'd put things on there and they'd be thrown out, so that's another thing that's not working real well, it's the timing on the town website, so. I mean, that could be the whole thing when recent it's invisible.
Before we had a website, we had the old style, get it in the mail, post it on the damn board and post it around town.
Yeah, but I mean, again, the thing is, I think, the key is, if we had it, it would be up there.
Yeah. And I realize the pandemic played a large part of this, being virtual. But still, we should have received something in the mail. We get all the blasting notifications in the mail. That hasn't gone virtual.
Unfortunately, I'm not prepared. I've got to, I've got to dig into that. I totally, the notices were all mailed and emailed, so why they weren't received. I don't know, I'll look at that and follow up with all of you.
Good.
All right.
Well, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Move along, thank you, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
You're done here? Yeah, we're done, we're done, we're finished.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I just figured that was a good overview for you guys to see what the changes are.
Katie, I'm, the information that Gail has, I'm going to put inside the folder so we have it. All right, public comments. Any public comments? Get to you in a minute, all right? All right, no public comments, all business. Mill River Unified District withdrawal discussion. Would you like to start that, all right?
I, I have some things to say, but, and I've kind of followed what the procedure is now. I think everyone's aware of what has to happen. But, you know, again, first of all, it's a very emotional issue for a lot of people, okay? Whether this board goes forward with it or not, to me, is immaterial. You could, you could go forward, you could have a vote, which would then make the other towns vote and see where it all turned out. But the, but the mere fact that you're considering it is what's important to me. And that's why I would strongly encourage participation by someone at the next school board meeting on July 21st at 7:00, if the high school be the first in-person meeting. And make it known that because of the things that are going on, this town, this board is talking about it. And the reason I think that's important, I want to, I want to just cover one issue that has not been really considered in any of this. And that's the MRU policy E4, and I'm going to read it, okay? It is the policy of the district to minimize the risk to the district as it discharges its responsibility for properly managing the resources of the school system. This responsibility includes concern for the safety of students, employees, and the public, as well as concerns for protecting the system's property from loss. No new program, policy, or procedure will be adopted or approved by the board, this is the school board, without first giving careful consideration to the school system's risk exposure. The fact that you're considering, or have considered, or may still consider, withdrawing this town from the district is a huge risk consideration that they have not even thought or looked at, okay? That's why, to me, it's important that the board, in some capacity, speak to this, at least in the public, in the public input section, session, at that meeting. You have power, okay, as a board, and I'm going to try to get another town member, town, to also speak what would happen if this town did withdraw and was allowed to withdraw. What would it do to their town and their taxes and that school? Okay, so that is my look at it. Whether you elect to do it or not, that's, that's up to you. But the fact that you're looking is a risk that the school system hasn't, hasn't even considered. I also want to just read a bylaw, the MRU U S D, I think you can say it, bylaw number nine. And I'll just read it, and I don't want to take your time, but, school buildings. The board will recognize and respect the long-term financial investment and community relationships that each town in the Mill River Union High School District Number 40 has with its school buildings. The board will encourage appropriate use of the buildings and all grounds by the students and community according to the policies and procedures of the Union School District. Respect the long-term financial investment and community relationship that each town has with the district. Apparently, that's not happening here, because your relationship has soured to the point where you're looking at maybe withdrawing, okay? My point is, in my opinion, the school district is not following their own procedure for risk assessment or even looking at how what they're doing, okay, is impacting the community, our community, and others maybe, but I'm speaking specifically to this community. So from, from my perspective, what I really, really encourage the board to do is to have a presence on the 21st, to say something about this at that meeting, and, and make it very clear that this board needs to look at the risk of what they're doing, and not only the flag issue, but other issues, and not sweep it under the rug, not ignore it, not just pass it in one session and be done. So that's my input on it, Chairman. And, you know, I'm, I'm here as long as you can discuss it.
I think at our last meeting, we were, I don't want to say we threw our hands up by any stretch, but we, we could not believe what we had received through help from Brian Collmore, from the state, telling us what the legal procedures are. First, we had to have the town vote to get out. But that doesn't mean we can get out, because we have to have the other towns vote for us to get out.
Correct.
And that still doesn't. It goes back to the state level. And they decide, well, if it's in the best interest of not the town that's having the issue, if it's in the best interest of the union. And, yeah, but, but what I think we decided at our last meeting, prior to you asking about a member or at least two members from the select board going there, was that, well, you know, we had raised a little dust and see where this settles and stuff like this. I don't, for one person on his board, when they tell us the selling feature of this whole thing was, we're going to cut taxes, we're going to cut taxes, it's going to help the students, we'll be better students and all these things. I can ask the treasurer right now, have our tax, school taxes gone down? No. So that's the biggest bogus piece of this. And if you look at the school ratings of, when we used to have such good ratings, your children went there, my older children went there, and their ratings were really high throughout, not only the county, but the state. But that's not the case now.
And that affects a lot of things. That affects more than, this is part of the risk, and this goes beyond your piece of it, kind of, but.
Their argument.
There's property values to consider, there's taxes to consider, there's a million different things that even the perception of failure by a school district, how it can affect the town. You know, tuition students, students leaving the district, the, the, this past year was down 9% to 10%. And that was directly out of superintendent's mouth. So something's wrong. And, you know, again, from my standpoint, if the board were to speak to any, any of the things, it'd be something that I think would, would just cite the problem and magnify that there are things wrong here that need to be corrected.
I, my older children went to school, I was proud of that school, you and I worked to get football into that school. The kids had, some of the kids that couldn't play volleyball or whatever, you know, the other sports that were big kids and stuff, we gave them some way to, you know, get the frustration out and be a member of teams and stuff like this. I don't see that now.
Well, there was a good spirit, and I don't see it, but, but again, and, and, you know, it goes back to the flag thing to me, and I, you know, I, I think that the vision that, that that creates is, is going to do nothing but damage. And I, and I just, so anyway, I don't want to take a lot of your time.
That is one political point of view with the flag thing. I am a combat veteran in Vietnam. All lives matter.
Exactly.
All lives matter. So don't, I, don't get me going on that. The other, but the more important thing is, and I talked to a couple folks that have moved their kids out of school, up to and including my youngest son, who's 16. He's, I, I am paying a good buck to have him go to school down in Long Trail because of what I feel is not being, well, not happening in here. I don't have a problem going to that meeting. But I want the other board members to weigh in on it.
And I would ask that all of you go just as individuals as towns members, you know, as taxpayers and, and you don't have to go as a board, you go as a, you know, hey, I'm a concerned taxpayer in this town and what's going on here. This is the first in-person meeting that they will have. And it comes on the heels of the decision they made at the last meeting. So that's kind of what it is. I'm going to speak to the risk management piece. I just feel that they have, they have made a decision in a vacuum. Yeah, they say they discussed it. I'd like to see when. And it's just some procedure. I don't want to get into what they do. We want to stay with what you guys are going to do. So that, that's my only spiel, Chair.
I'm, I'm retired law enforcement myself, and my sister got credit for naming that school. They had a contest, and I think four, four students had the same answer. And she was given the credit, they pulled a hat out of a hat, and she got credit for naming that school. And that's when it was starting out. And I believe all lives matter. And I'll go, you know, if I can make that meeting, I'll darn sure go to that thing.
Absolutely. Well, good work, thanks, thanks. I, you know, that, that's my only, uh, the only reason for coming. And I, I just, uh, and I, if, if you, if you move forward with the vote, I mean, that's, that, that'd be great, I guess. That's up, up to you. But the fact that you're thinking about it, and I think they know this. I think they know it. I believe they were sent an email, uh, from the superintendent that these things are being looked at. I think...
I don't think, on this board, it's not a dead issue. I think it's, it's a case of, we'll wait and see how they react, stuff like this. But I think it's now time to...
And those words to them next Wednesday would, would carry a lot of weight. We're waiting and seeing people. Because it just, you know, um, I, I don't wanna say this stuff's being crammed down our throat, but it's being crammed down our throat.
And part of that is the stuff that goes on up Mount Pillar as you're learning how things get rushed in, especially at the end of a session.
Yes, they do.
Uh, where a lot of people vote on something, they don't even realize a particular item gets tied in with stuff. I've been there, I know. Um, Rob, do you have any?
Um, I can be a bit of a polarizing figure just because the institution that I run has benefited from the exodus from Mill River and the surrounding schools. So because of that, I am purposefully staying away from the issue.
Totally understandable.
But I will state that as a resident of the Town of Clarendon, and as a representative of the Town of Clarendon, absolutely the political nature of the direction that things are headed are, is extremely concerning to me. And I am an alumni of Mill River. Um, and, and certainly, it's concerning the political nature of what's happened. However, again, I, I made the decision early on just because my institution that I administrate is benefiting from some of the fallout in this, in this area. Um, I'm purposely kinda staying out of the fray. But, um, but that's where I'm at.
Bob?
Well, I think one of the things, I agree with that, at least some of us. I'm gonna try and make that meeting a twenty-first. I won't guarantee at this point. I'm gonna try and make it. I think one of the first things that people in Town of Clarendon gotta do is get right on our school board members to step up and do what the residents want, and not what somebody else wants. That's my thought. As far as the flag thing, I have grandchildren, both sides of the spectrum. So I won't even get into that, except to say that all lives matter. And that's all I'll say at this point.
Yes?
I'm totally on board with what I've seen with the education and the enrollment drop and the...
Rising taxes.
Downgrade, should I say, of quality of education that's coming out of there. I did, I'm alumni of the school. I was there, I was brand new.
And, and the enrollment drop will continue. And some of it's because of less kids, I get that. But the superintendent did state that some of it's because of the...
When a person from out of state, or even in his state, but most of the time out of state, I know, 'cause I'm from out of state. I came here, one of the first things I looked at before I settled into town was the issue of how good the school is or isn't. And that paid a big price. I had two choices, here or Springfield. 'Cause I worked for a power company. I chose here because of the, of the, how good we thought, our family thought the school district was. So, if you have a school that has some issues, people are coming to look for real estate to buy a house.
That's exactly...
All of a sudden, you go downhill.
These are all the risk assessments that, that need to be considered. Property values, will houses sell? You have a good family, your kid's in the back, and they go by and see that, flag on the flagpole, it sends a message. Some will say, "Good," and, and that's fine. But some won't, some won't. And, and so, if there wasn't a flag like Manors Flag and the Flagpole, it's two flags that we all know and like, and, and it's there. And...
Pay your attention to all that should be there.
I just feel like there's a lot of, I have also gotten calls from sponsors. You know, you go in the gym, there's this fund by so-and-so. This may start to come out of there. Because people have...
We wanna educate our children.
And that's sad.
And that should be the prime concern of anybody in that school, anybody that's on the board of directors at school, to educate, get a better educated child out of there. All this other stuff that's going on down there, I mean, I can't believe it. I, I hadn't...
It's not just here, it's everywhere.
You just wanna take a non-binding vote. Take a vote, take a vote of everyone in the district. Non-binding. But all, everybody says yes, you cannot fly the flag. Everybody says no, you can still do it. But, and I've encouraged this all along, but I don't, again, I don't wanna take your time. I, I, I just wanna bring it up that, um, your voices are powerful. Your voices are powerful. What you get up there and, and, and say, "I'm, I'm on the Board of Selectmen of Clarendon," and blah, 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 it has meaning. That, that's all I would just encourage.
I think that those of us on the board that can make it to that meeting should make it. As you pointed out, as citizens, not as a town. Otherwise, we have to, if there's more than, if there's three or more, then you have to...
You're at a meeting.
Yeah, you're at a meeting. And it's open meeting law, you can't do that. So, I think we'll work that out within the board. And I can get back to you to let you know who can make it.
I respect what you do, and whatever you do would be a help.
All right, all right. Thanks for coming down.
All right, sir. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, all right. Back there.
Keep up the good work up there in the Gold Dome.
I'll cry.
All right, coronavirus, local fiscal, good night, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, local fiscal recovery funds.
Nice to meet you, John.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
So, these are concerning the ARPA funds. We have to request our funds by July fifteenth. Um, and there's a couple different things you have to do, um, before certifying. So that would be accepting the funds and signing those documents, as well as designating an authorized representative and contact person.
So have we, you and I had discussion about this because there's concern that we really do... I guess the question is, do we have a qualifying project or area that these funds can be expended?
So, I can speak to that. We currently don't know, honestly. The RRPC has tried to guide us, as they did when they were, when Ed Bo was here, um, a month or so ago. Um, the VLCT is trying to guide us as to what we could potentially use this for. As of right now, it doesn't look like we do have a qualifying project that we could use this money on. However, with that being said, I've also spoken to not only the VLCT, NIMREC, Wendy Wilton. I've reached out to a bunch of different folks. Sullivan Powers, auditing company firm, accounting firm. And every single one of them has said, regardless of if you have a project or not, accept the money, take the money. Because for the sheer fact that even while the money is restricted and only able to be used for certain projects, the interest off of that money is unrestricted. So even at the end of the day, if we aren't able to use the money for any specific projects and have to hand it back, um, which I've also been told that the state doesn't want the money back, and they're not going to want it back. So they're going to try to fight to help all of us to figure out what we can do with this money. And the federal government sure doesn't want it back 'cause then they have to figure out what to do with it. So, it, it seems it's in our best interest to accept this money. And hopefully, within the next year, year and a half, hopefully sooner than that, months from now, they maybe see that, um, hey, rural towns, where these restrictions were set for, that, that, you know, rural towns, this money was not geared for rural towns, even though we're receiving it.
Sure.
So hopefully, they will, um, come to know that, or loosen the restrictions a little bit and help us to be able to use this money.
So, I'm seeing this on the school side of things. All of these bills that came out as COVID relief funds came out, you had to initially jump into the pool to get it. And then, once you were in the pool, it all depended on if they were going to structure it in such a... In some cases, the delivery of the money is actually preceding any documentation or final documentation on what it can be used for. So you have to jump into the pool, get awarded, and then wait for them to finalize all the guidance, and then see if you fit into the categories. And what Heidi just said, I've discovered to be true on the school side of things. When they discover that people aren't qualifying enough for it, they're redrafting things and opening it up so you can use it on other things. They're, they're trying to make it work. So, I think, based on that, I, I, I think it's a wise... Basically, everybody's saying, "You gotta at least jump in the pool and get what you can get," is a wise thing. What we did, um, is we jumped in, we got our allocation, we literally put it in a separate bank account, and it sat alone. And when we were able to officially get approved to draw off of it, we drew off of it, utilized it for what it was allowed for, and you were done. Like that, and that's a lot easier for tracking on the financial side, too. So, I think that the, the proper thing then in that case is for us to accept and get it and see... And again, the worst-case scenario is they tell you, you don't, and you write a check and you send it back. And it, again, it accrued interest while it was in your possession. And most of, if this is a part of the 1.5 trillion that was passed, which I think it is, um, whatever it was, 1 point whatever trillion.
That's the one I'm talking, 240.
Yeah. So, what, that, that dollar, um, award out of that bill, at least on the school side of things, my knowledge is, they've opened it up now. Like, you're gonna be, you're gonna have all the way up until like September or even after of 2023 to spend it. Like, they're giving you two and a half years before it even has to be...
This, this money has years. This, this ARPA money for the town is years.
Yeah, it's multiple years that you have to use it.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, if we now, as treasurer, and we get this money, 250,000...
It was 240 something.
All right, whatever it is.
Seems like, I think.
That will be put into...
I'll be tracking it separately.
Right. And...
I was gonna ask if you have a different category for that or something.
Yeah, I, I can do that in our financial system, is track it separately. So that that is...
Yeah.
So that that is...
I just thought you were sunburned.
Short answer, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, then I entertain a motion to have this signed by the board chair.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept our allocation of CLRF funding from the US Treasury, and that we appoint...
Mike would be the authorized representative, and Katie would be the contact person.
Yeah, that we appoint Michael Colopson as the authorized representative on behalf of the Town of Clarendon, and Katie Knopp as the contact person for the Town of Clarendon.
Second it. Is there any further discussion? There's a lot of money in my pocket now.
Yeah, it might not be in your pocket, I don't know. But I agree with, uh, Robert and Heidi. Because Heidi and I had a little discussion before the meeting because I asked, putting the same question.
She and I talked about it the other day.
I, I see it almost as a win-win situation. We may win big, we may win small, but we're gonna win. That's what I see.
Sounds like it, I guess.
Because if you have to send it back, you're at least gonna have the interest. Now, I know interest is not real great in the banks right now, but, uh, maybe a few bucks, maybe get cash, a pair of boots.
That amount of money, it'd be something.
Even money markets, though, are guaranteed now, aren't they? And, I mean, it's gonna grant, it's gonna gain more interest than a typical savings.
CJ, before we vote on this, I would like to ask you, as a public member of this meeting tonight, you have some background dollars and cents wise. And you're hearing these conversations between the board and the treasurer. What do you think? Okay.
Oh, what's gonna ask? I heard that, um, the interest is unrestricted. But if you have to give back the 250, you get to keep the interest?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the interest rate now?
I have to look it up, I'm not sure.
In our bank account? I mean, even, even when you collect all that money in October, what's the interest rate?
Not real big.
I don't have to have it now, but, um...
It changes.
There, well, sure. Interest rates go up and down, and they got no place to go but up. But it seems like it's gonna be a while. But there are places that are just as safe, and I don't mean the stock market, but there are banks that pay a lot more than any local bank, even more than a credit union.
And that's what I was alluding to. There, there's places you can put it to gain more.
Personally, and I think that's what you're asking.
I am.
Uh, you know, I have a IRA, a Roth IRA, in an individual account. That's synonymous with a joint account, 'cause I'm single, okay? When I'm out of the stock market, I don't move the Roth IRA or the IRA, there's too much paperwork there. But the individual is a matter of going online and sending it right to wherever I want. Okay? And I would kinda put stuff through Heritage and then there. And there was a bank, I was, Synchrony Bank is an online bank, and they paid a lot more. And I can find that out as a savings account. You know, some, some restrictions, as I recall, you got to do three withdrawals a day, maximum of $100,000 each. You know, that doesn't seem too tough. That has a savings account and even a checking in there, that's probably less interest. And certificates of deposit, I think, that I last, I knew, only 12 months. But the savings account, I, I move my money there. Why not earn more?
Yeah, that's what I...
And it's FDIC, as I recall, too.
That's what got me up over 400,000.
Yeah, I think they're approved up to, they raised it to 500,000 now, I think.
I, I thought of, I had thought of something like that for, I mean, when you receive a slug of money in October, and you could eat it down, that slug could go into something like that. And you could even possibly, if there was shorter-term CDs, you know, you could kinda do cash flows.
Like a six-month CD and...
Something, something, you'd have to tailor. But I'd be willing to bet, and I know it's higher than Heritage, which is where my stuff is at when it's local.
Right.
And I'm at Fidelity, and it's, I mean, Heritage Savings Account is .15%. The money market funds for some time now are .01%. You can't get any lower. And your only risk there is if the money market fund is invested in, you know, they're, they're in a bunch of cash instruments with, with things. And it's called breaking the buck. You put in a buck, you're gonna get a buck back, okay? But back in the savings and loan debacle, savings and loan went to hell. Some of the money was in the savings and loan, and they broke the buck. They only got 95, 95 cents on the dollar. Okay, that's a risk. But, I mean, the stock market would be out.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so...
I mean, I, I just picked up three projects that are in the financial nature. I've been working on one all day. But I'd always thought about some sort of way to, um, put the unused cash to, to work.
I've been dancing around that myself. I've been dancing around that myself. I've gotta... I've been dancing around that myself, I've got a couple relatives at stock market, down in the stock market and stuff, so. But that's another story. Uh, moving right along.
Call motion?
Yeah, there's a motion.
I I just, I I could do some investigation on Synchrony Bank.
I think that.
But that's actually a treasurer.
That's where the conversation should be. Alright, all in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Kingsley Bridge.
So I provided you with some information I sent over email. And right there for um lighting and fire retardant options for the bridge. I um I think she wants the final decision mid-September, um but since we were talking about it at the last meeting, I. Figure while it's still fresh, I would give you that information. Um, on that second page, Robert, I don't know if you're reading it.
I was glancing, yeah.
I highlighted where the original cost estimate includes. Um, the pricing for that nochar and lighting. But the utilities, like monthly after that for lighting.
Yep.
Is on the town. So.
So to make this easy, I would make a motion that we accept the original design. With the fire retardant and the lighting. Uh in the lighting on the bridge. As it was specked, no, no additional, in other words, no, I don't wanna. So I don't wanna put in a sprinkler system, I don't wanna put in a detection system, I I wanna do it as they bid it. Is my motion.
I'll second that for discussion.
Fine with like the monthly bill after that for.
Yeah, obviously, we're gonna accept the fact that we're gonna be. It's gonna be minimal, it's LED lighting, I mean, we're not talking. We're talking minimal, minimal.
Who's second in that?
I do.
Shaking his head, no.
The headlights can't turn straight. You know what I mean, you got headlights on a car, they're going straight, you can't veer on the bridge, you're gonna hit the wall on either side. Can't see that, then the person should be, their driver's license ought to be removed.
The.
I think it's a waste.
The issue that we.
Waste.
The issue.
I hate to pit, to get things that gotta have a bill for the rest of time.
The issue we got approached with, though, was.
Pedestrian.
The multiple people that have come forward that have said they've had issues with pedestrians in the dark. That's what we're more concerned about.
They didn't have their headlights on, can't see?
We've been into that bridge and I've been through that bridge when somebody was on it, when we were over there. With like the engineers and. And see. When you're in the middle of it, believe it or not. Especially daytime. It's even worse, yeah.
But, like I said, I made my motion, it can die or whatever.
Been seconded?
Yeah, seconded.
For discussion. Any further discussion?
Well, I have just a little bit of concern with the lighting. Fire retardant, yes, absolutely. The lighting. We're gonna have to uh. Put some power in there, it's there fairly close, I believe, I don't think it's too far away. But uh, it's gonna be an added meter charge bill every month. That we're gonna have.
We're gonna have to pay the meter, I mean, that's that's what it boils down to.
Yeah, and.
Cause the the project is specked for putting the power in.
Yeah.
In there already.
Yeah.
But.
But uh. Also, too, I think. And I'm old school, my old man, it takes away the nostalgia of the old Vermont covered bridge. I think uh. Now, you can win there in the daytime, it is a little hard to see a person. But if you win that bridge at a reasonable speed, you should have plenty of time to stop uh. But I have seen them come down the hill often, East Street and get through that bridge quite a lot faster than they should be going, you know? But uh, that's all I got to say.
Cash, you got anything?
The fire retardant. That. How does that affect our insurance? Does that actually? Save us for not being such a high risk?
That should help. I would think that liability wise, I would, it should absolutely help.
And I'm wondering what the maintenance is on it.
It didn't explain. There's no explanation.
I mean, that's, that's something that. I would think that have to freshen it up every, I don't know, two, three years.
I was gonna say, you'd think they'd have to come in and touch it up.
Jay's got a question.
Yes.
You got an answer.
How many fires have you had in covered bridges in the state of Vermont?
Usually one a year.
One a year?
You'd burn one up over in Proctor there last couple of years ago.
I know the one in Woodstock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One going.
People setting these?
The one going into Bridgewater. Uh. Some kids set off firecrackers, not this year, a couple of years ago, and it burned. Didn't burn the whole bridge, but it burned uh some of the siding the guy had put up. So he had to put other siding up and then it was different shade because the other stuff was already bleached by the sun, so. Now, if you go over there, the whole thing is redone.
I hope the wiring, I hope the wiring doesn't fail because the bridge to burn.
Your your other option to, and we we could push the issue. If we're really concerned about the GMP is we talked about. Solar. And having them put in the so, I mean. River Street Bridge over off of Door Drive.
That's all solar.
That's all solar. I mean, you could certainly. And and that is actually right here in the report. That you could, you could do solar.
Yeah.
So. If if it's more amenable, I'm willing to amend my motion to state solar.
About the second.
I would be willing to change and go with the second, yeah.
Yes.
Um, I I remember I was in on the Zoom meeting when the engineers came and talked, so I have some reason, and one of the things was to. Less. Aesthetics were lost with the twelve ton as opposed to the fifteen or twenty ton, and that's what they kind of liked.
Correct.
Solar panels up on the roof, is that gonna be an aesthetic problem?
Sure, I mean, it's gonna be historic.
I don't. That's if that's the place.
If they're here in this discussion tonight.
On the west side.
Huh?
On the west side of the bridge.
But there's a lot of tree.
Who can see it from either way?
Lot of tree and shade there.
Well, middle of the bridge, I mean.
The shade and stuff.
Go look at it, it's not.
Well, it says that. It says, oh, well, so here it says reduced daytime hours and colder temperatures in winter. Appear to pose difficulties for alternative power at the site.
Because you got a longer night and longer hours of darkness in the winter, shorter to get solar.
I I personally like what you're saying. I don't wanna see any electric in that bridge.
No.
It's just gonna be. Having worked on electric lines over and over and over many years, there's always an issue. And then, of course, there's always a bill. And I, I'm just one member.
I'll withdraw my motion. All together.
Neither.
Let somebody else make one.
I'll withdraw the second, maybe.
Have a bridge.
We discussed it. I hated, I hated it.
Already knew what was gonna happen, so withdraw it before it goes down, I was like, okay.
And you did make a, a point about how many bridges do burn, I believe it's close to one a year.
And how they set?
The last one, the snowmobile caught fire in it and they didn't get it out.
Remember that one up north, and then they called the nine, nine one one, they said, don't move the snowmobile.
Move the snowmobile, the bridge all the way down.
Burn holes in it.
Why would you even call? I mean, is it a common sense? Move the snowmobile off, it's burning the bridge? I mean, what a stupid call, I don't think we got the right answer, I don't think that's the real story, I can't be either, that's stupid.
But I will say, working at a bridge with the engineers. The daytime was actually worse than when it got darker. But.
I go across that bridge to uh. Find it very hard to believe.
I I personally think. If we wanna take this one piece at a time, I'll make a motion that we do accept the plan for the fire retardant, I think that's a no-brainer.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, second to that, okay.
Alright.
What what's the expense if you wanna make comment on it?
It's included.
Maintenance down the road. That's what.
Well, then, if that's, if that's what we're concerned about, we need to table this until next meeting and get answers.
That's my concern, cause that that should fall in the fire apartments.
Oh, jeez, you really are gonna toss a stone now.
No, that's not gonna go, there's been a motion made.
Let me get Matt on the phone.
Been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did.
Public?
Yeah, um. Well, you said it's included, included, as I remember, the twelve ton figure?
Correct, so the specs that we accepted for the cost associated with that twelve ton that we decided that night. It states in here that the spray fire retardant is included in the price.
Okay, and and other fire stuff was extra.
Correct, anything else.
Any of the extra.
No, we're not doing.
I don't understand why you're voting, having to vote on fire retardant.
We have to make, they want us to say yes or no.
To the fire retardant, have you already said yes or no to the twelve ton number?
Yes, we did, we did that.
Includes fire retardant.
Yes. But they want us to give them.
Saying.
It seems redundant, but they want us to state yes or no.
I see what you're saying.
If it's.
I mean, if you, if you, if you say no to the fire retardant, is the price coming down a little bit?
I would, I would assume.
Yes, it would.
It's like thirty thousand dollars or something.
The other thing is.
I hear what you're saying, too, Cash.
The town chair. Is like pennies on a dollar compared of.
Yeah, because you're doing closer for fourteen months and a few other things.
Well, no.
You're only paying five percent, as I recall from that.
I'm talking about the financial part.
Yeah.
Now's the time to do it because of the town chairman. The ten percent.
The ten, yeah, I thought I heard five, but.
Or five.
Some, some small, small number. You can't, this is another no-brainer. You know, for the.
Mr. Chairman, I call my motion.
Alright, there's been a motion made, been seconded, uh looks as though uh it's time to vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
After all, I voted for it!
He must have had something to eat, right?
Tell you.
What did I say about no brainer?
Alright.
Okay, so lighting, you don't need to go back and ask them some questions, or you don't wanna do lighting?
Alright. This discussion sounds like no lighting. Uh, if Robbie wants to.
I'm not making any more, I've I've made my motion, so again, I I saw the direction lighting was going, if somebody else wants to try, go for it, but.
That's an ongoing thing. I don't, I don't.
So, okay, there's no decision made, just that is the.
Now, there is a decision made, it sounds to me. For me, if I'm wrong, board. That. A majority of this board is not interested in having an ongoing bill for lighting in that bridge. It's been like that since. The whole bridge was built.
Yeah.
Unless somebody wants to put a water wheel in the creek.
And and a hundred percent of the public.
Not to mention.
I mean, I think the consensus was that if solar was an option, we would potentially put some solar lighting, is that the idea?
I would consider, I feel, I'm not totally happy with lighting in the bridge, but I would uh. Give consideration to solar if it was done.
I think we should be prepared, I mean, this is obviously a decision, doesn't have to be made till September.
Right.
But. The consensus at that meeting of the residents on that side of town, just remember, was they wanted something.
Yeah.
So just be prepared, it may come up after tonight.
Right.
Cause that was my read on the situation. So.
Alright, moving right along.
You had a first.
Yeah, UniFirst shop rags contract.
So, um, I was able to get a contract for you guys, um, and it's about twenty-five dollars a month for uh the rag service. But I just wanted you to note that it's a three-year agreement. With no price increase. So I don't know how you guys feel about a three-year, but I want you to be aware.
Right here.
I'll make a motion except the three-year at the same price.
Alright. And uh. Looks like the board chair. It's only one signature space.
It was a motion needed.
Signed by the. Board chair. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
So, whoa, 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 whoa.
I'm looking to get a chance.
So. What are we going through, I guess is my question for rags, I mean, are you gonna, is this gonna be well?
I penciled it out and it. We could actually buy paper towels. Like, instead of using the rental rags.
Yeah.
Get washed all the time. And. What I could see is we're actually gonna be using dollar-wise. More, we buy two boxes of paper towels. Per month.
Like the shop towels or whatever?
Towels.
Yeah.
Would equal what the twenty-five dollars is, and I believe that. It's gonna be pretty close, and I believe actually this is probably gonna be cheaper.
So we potentially will save this way. Some, not a lot, but some compared to.
And then we have less disposal.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too, I mean, this is obviously with this way, they're getting laundered, so they're not. Right, they're they're cleaning them.
Yes, yes.
So they're not gonna. Be adding to the landfill.
Right.
Three years is a long time, I mean, I just.
Well, then, we gotta pay disposal of them at transfer station, basically, because we pay by the ton.
Yeah.
I didn't put that in the equation. Not to whale off, but.
Are you in the discussion?
No, my questions are answered.
Okay, is there anything from the public?
Nothing.
Okay, all of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, good. Um, what is this? Uh assurances of compliance with civil rights requirement, and it has to be signed.
That had to do with the ARPA funds.
With the ARPA.
It basically means that you're not going to discriminate when you're hiring for whatever jobs you're gonna do.
Was it signed?
It's the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four.
Pretty much boilerplate, so yeah.
It's boilerplate, it's a part of, you've gotta just sign that page.
Okay. Did we make motion that?
It was all a part of the application that we approved, so I don't think you need a separate motion for it.
Thanks for the clarity on that. You gotta sit in this seat.
That seat?
Yeah, right-hand to that seat.
For the lightning bolt.
Good thing it ain't thundering out.
Alright, um, Heidi, do you have any reports?
I am all set for tonight, thank you.
You. Katie, do you have?
I think I'm all set as well.
Okay, uh, Cash, what, do you have any concerns?
Yeah, back. Probably should have brought up on my highway report, I just have issues with a couple individuals on a roadside mowing. Um, actually, three of them, one of them had a conversation with him and. Um, actually, three of them, one of them had a conversation with him and after I explained a few things and gave him some alternatives, he agreed to let us take back the brush the way so we're not smashing mirrors on the trucks. And now I have the same issue on Courtline Road with a couple individuals in schoolhouse, so.
That is something you can work out with the property owners?
It sounds like it's been ongoing over the years, so.
Um.
And what's fair for one, fair for others, mowing it back. And we do it for safety reasons and these people get off with it, but.
Well, along with this, in the town right-of-way, the town has the authority, in my opinion, to clear the right-of-way. Um, I did get one phone call, no, two actually. But one was a longer phone call about how come we're not mowing on this side on the smaller dirt roads? And then I explained that, first of all, it's been raining lately, uh, not to mention the fact that our blacktop roads take priority. Right, and stuff like this, so. Um, but I said that I would talk to you about it here at the meeting. So, uh, I tried to explain as nice and be nice as possible, um, with the fact that, you know, there are priorities in town. Um, one of the priorities, of course, is putting the ditching and stuff in for Walker Mountain Road, as I said before, before they come in blacktop. You don't want to destroy new blacktop, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
I think I'm pretty well set other than, uh, thank you, Cash, for the middle road, the bridge at Scott Brook.
What's that?
The Paulette.
Paulette.
Yeah, get it taken care of.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Rob, you have anything?
Nope, not tonight.
Rick? Um, yeah, I just want to let you guys, before I contact the Sheriff's Department about this, because, um, I really, really have a pet peeve about these people that are mowing the grass into the road. And I followed a motorcycle yesterday going that way on the middle road. It is illegal to mow the grass into the road. And two places I saw the grass was a full half a road.
Clipping.
For a hundred feet of grass in the road and a motorcycle went through it. And I said, dear Lord, don't let him slip. He went slow. He slowed down. I will be contacting the Sheriff's Department to write them tickets up. If they see him, they stop, stop the house, they, there it is. And it's going to, it's going to happen one of these days. The same thing with snow. Somebody's going to slip on that grass and.
I don't think people understand that it is a danger. Grass is slippery.
It's just as much as snow and even heavy rain even, but, but, but doing it on purpose like that.
It's actually illegal to.
Yeah, make the sheriff aware.
I will be, I will be calling the sergeant.
Uh, public?
That's a Mr. Public to you.
It all depends on your frame of mind, but.
I, I'm all a thousand feet my road frontage, yeah, close to it. And, uh, you know, going down, you know, next to the road, pointing it off the road.
Right.
And then when I come back, I come back the inside. But that's where I got people coming and I can see them coming. And I don't want to be throwing all them rocks you guys put down into somebody's, which, and I stop. And I'll tell you, there's a lot of people know exactly why I'm stopped.
Yeah.
They know it. They wave.
Right.
They do.
Thank you much.
But you can't, you know, when you come back, you're going to blow some, okay? But I find that three or four cars, vehicles have come through and they've dispersed it.
As they go passing them.
Yeah.
There's enough of them out there that don't.
I don't know anything about.
Those are the ones that matter.
Enough of what?
Enough of the people that are blowing that grass in there. It's so heavy. This stuff was so heavy, the cars weren't moving it. Um, but I mow mine, I'll go three rows in before I turn around and mow the other way.
I, I have to make two passes each way.
Yeah.
I can't, I don't want to go up on the road.
And I don't.
I'll make it so you don't have to make no passes and put a ditch right down.
There's no ditch necessary down there, you know, and when, uh, what's his name, the third one back there, Bowen, put the ditch through my access.
Oh.
Frickin'. I went there the day of Irene, five o'clock in the afternoon, and there was six feet maybe of some grass bent over. The, the water just goes that way. It doesn't go down the road. You got to be worried, I, I can't understand why you can't be worried about the other side of the road, which is the uphill side in the ditch. Same guy, I tell you, and I kept my mouth shut till now.
Way to go, Cash.
Miracle's too happy.
You had to poke, didn't you? We were getting ready to adjourn.
Just because that sidearm brush hog goes 12 feet, you don't have to do the whole 12 feet. It's got to have some purpose involved.
There is a purpose.
I know, to keep the brush down. But if I, I mow that regularly, 1,000 feet, that guy doesn't have to put that thing, especially since it's downhill.
No, you don't have to down there, but you can keep.
He did today.
He needs to put it up and put brush back.
He did today.
He's put brush back.
Down the, the lower side.
Today. But I remember you did it above my house.
Oh, yeah.
I said, downhill, I mean, how much snow do you think there is? And if I'm mowing it, there ain't no brush growing out to the road.
It didn't grow back, did it?
No. What gets done by the bush hog 10, 12 feet away grows up, but don't come out, doesn't come out to the road. It's a waste of time, whereas across the road.
Actually.
There's a, there's, there's only a tiny ditch, you know, and I'm downhill three feet and, and out. There's a tiny ditch.
We're at Charlton West over here on East Street tomorrow morning.
And all these big trees.
East Clay.
There are the things in your way where put snow.
All right, so bring some closure.
As a suggestion, I was going to say, you're cutting a lot of green stuff next to the road.
Do we?
Maybe you ought to do that every three years and cut down on the time you do it. So in three years, you know, junk will grow, but it's still not enough to impede the snow removal. And then, so you've cut down a 30-year time.
Do we?
Think about it.
Do we still have to have an executive session tonight?
If I have one-on-one throughout between now and two weeks, no.
Say that again?
If I have a one-on-one with each one of you within next two weeks, no.
I don't necessarily, no, let's not one-on-one. We'll go, make a motion going to executive session.
Okay.
At the clock.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss a personnel issue, um, not to exceed 15 minutes.
Yeah.
15 minutes.